Good evening. I would like to call this committee the whole to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City council members, Ammons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
All right. First item on the agenda, approval of minutes of previous meetings from October 22, 2018.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Moved by Dean, seconded by Jared. Corrections. Diane.
One correction on page two, under number five, presentations, last paragraph. Public worker, it's on the section on public works director, Bill Gray. Mayor Marlin announced a dedication celebration. That should be a retirement celebration.
So noted.
Bill.
And the paragraph right above that, the plague of dead ash trees, not ashmore trees. And then, I think, it said during that time, city staff sent letters to all the residents that had a fallen tree. I think that was failing tree.
All right. Any other corrections? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Any additions to the agenda tonight? Public input. Do we have any public input cards? No? Anybody from the audience? All right. Presentations. Do we have any presentations tonight? No presentations. Staff reports.
Good evening. Libby Horwitz, Economic Development Coordinator with the Business and Development Report for October. October was actually a very busy month. If you remember, September was a little short on updates, but October is a long one. So 200 South Vine, the city has entered into a letter of intent with Green Street Realty for the development of a 42-unit townhome-style development. Green Street has had a community meeting and has talked to many council members as well, and they are going to be getting us revised drawings and renderings by, hopefully, the end of the week. 1301 East Washington, the city had an auction for that. That's also known as the TriStar Building. And Ed and Michelle Salfelder, I believe, bought the property for $18,000. There were four registered bidders who participated, and the property was sold as is with the condition that the buyer demolishes all buildings and parking lots in the property within 90 days. The purchaser plans to develop a neighborhood-friendly restaurant along with some retail space. Rick's Bakery opened their second location at 124 West Main, and unfortunately, although they initially planned to maintain both locations, they have closed their Philo location on November 5. CU Adventures in Time and Space, the escape room business, has completed their initial remodel at their location at 302 North Broadway, and they're now offering the Revenge of the Cabin escape room. McDonald's completed renovations for both their 601 North Cunningham and McDonald's properties. Those included self-order kiosks that they added in both. A&R Mechanical just completed a major addition, a 14,278-square-foot addition, and that's for space for fabrication shop and expanded offices. Carl is also completing multiple projects, including 20,000-square-feet entrance to the hospital. And they are also completing a 1.8 million renovation of the property, the Ray Timponi 221 North Broadway. Lincoln Square Mall has had some new businesses as well. The Idea Store opened, Capoeira Angola Center had their business opening, and the Place for Children with Autism opened in October. Think Urbana, year-to-date single-family and duplex construction remained strong in Urbana in 2018. There was, as of pulling this report, 49 single-family permits being pulled to date, and year-to-date Urbana new single-family construction increased 123% over 2017. That's an increase of 27 total permits. Urbana also currently has 20% of the new single-family permits in the region, so that region is Champaign-Urbana-Savoy-Mohammed. In October, for Think Urbana marketing, we completed a YouTube campaign in October that just wrapped up, and also had a booth at the University of Illinois Employee Expo. There was also two conferences of note. There was the International Council of Shopping Centers, which staff attended and talked to brokers and different retail and businesses. And also, the 2018 Illinois Enterprise Zone Association Fall Conference was held in Urbana-Champaign this year, and staff presented on Think Urbana and provided a tour of recent development in Urbana. I will leave you to read through the rest of the report, as it is some small events and as well as updates mostly covered in the front page. Are there any questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other staff reports this evening? No? Brandon?
Good evening. I wanted to provide a short update about the Urbana Landmark Hotel. As council knows, but is worth repeating, the city of Urbana does not own the Urbana Landmark Hotel. It's worth repeating because we spend a lot of time talking about it, but it's important that the public understand that this is not a city-owned property. It's privately held.
Brandon, can I ask you to move your microphone a little closer?
Oh, is it not registering? Okay.
Thank you.
So it bears worth repeating into the microphone, the city of Urbana does not own the Urbana Landmark Hotel. That said, it's an important property located in the heart of our downtown, so we do spend a lot of time talking about it, the sites near it, and the many investments that have been made in and around this important location in our downtown. And in addition, Mayor Marlin and staff have spent a lot of time meeting with over a dozen different developers and hoteliers who have expressed interest in the property over recent months, and provided active support to the private property owner in their efforts to market this property in our downtown. The hotel's been closed since 2016, as was the choice of the private owner, and they've tried to sell that property in a few different venues, traditional commercial listings, and now to private online auctions. While the property was listed, a private developer offered to purchase the property at a price of 5.4 million if the city would provide, as was requested by the proposed developer at that time, $9.5 million upfront. In order to provide such funds, the city would have needed to commit approximately 15 million over 20 years to support a municipal bond. It just wasn't financially possible to raise such funds in any other way, and as you know, this was financially unacceptable for the city to pursue. In the first online auction that followed, no bidder met the owner's reserve price of $4 million. In the second online auction that concluded earlier this year, the highest qualified bidder declined to close on the property at a purchase price of 1.2 million, and also requested from the city that all new tax revenues over the next 20 years, or approximately $13 million, be rebated back to the developer. This was also financially unacceptable for the city. What is the market saying about this property at this point, in terms of its value and its ability to be put back into productive use in our downtown? The city will continue to support the private owner's efforts to sell the property, and we will continue to focus on development opportunities in downtown Urbana at nearby properties such as 200 Vine and in the nearby city-owned parking lots. The city will also continue to work together with the hotel and mall owners to develop long-term plans for the entire Lincoln Square site per the mayor's West and Your Square Initiative and city council goals, with an aim to redeveloping the area to the benefit of our communities over a 50-year period. That concludes my remarks, but I wanted to know if the mayor had anything she'd like to add.
Well, sure. I'll just add a few comments, and that again is based on our many meetings with developers over the past year or so. It became clear from the developers, who were committed to redeveloping the area into a full-service, high-quality hotel, it was going to be a $15 to $20 million project. That became sort of the consistent number we were hearing from people renovating the existing hotel. Most of them said that most of the interior would be gutted in this process, so it's not a restoration project. It was a gut job. All of them said it would require substantial public investment. We didn't get to the point of specific asks from most of them, but it was clear that all of them would have if they had gotten to that point. They all noted that the location of the building is excellent, particularly related to how close it is to the U of I. That came up over and over again, and the need for meeting space, conference space, and event space, both on campus and, you know, and in the community. And it was also very clear that it was a high-risk project, which is why, when we did get to the point of talking about financial incentives, the asks were always very, very high. So that's, that's pretty much, I think it's safe to say those are the, that is the framework that we're operating under at this point. But that said, I think bears repeating what Brandon stated at the end, is we'll continue to work with the owner to find a buyer for this hotel and a use for the site, and just when you think things are bleakest, then you get another phone call, so we continue on. And in the meantime, there are a lot of other sites nearby, a number of other sites nearby that we're going to be focusing on, and the one most imminent is the 200 Vine site. And I'm very optimistic about the area in general. And then, long-term, we do need to have a plan for the entire Lincoln Square site that will serve us for decades to come, so. Any questions?
Questions. Dennis?
Yeah. Thanks so much for the report, Brandon, and I understand all the permutations of the problems that we have. Not being able to really do very much, perhaps, to secure the finalization of a developer for the site because of its condition, perhaps, and some of the challenges that that creates. I guess my real question for you as staff member is that during the negotiations, when the last developer came up with a request for 20-year abatement of all taxes related to the hotel's income, and having earlier commented that they were probably expecting maybe a five- to seven-year abatement of taxes, was there a possibility of meeting them halfway and offering them something in between that the city could absorb and make this project happen? I mean, had the city thought about offering 10- to 12-year abatement?
The city was not in a position to negotiate in earnest with the developer, with the bidder, because they had not taken title of the property, and there was not sufficient time to bring any considerations forward to council. So we were not given the option of anything short of the full ask of the developer. And based on that, and based on the fact that the information we requested in response to their offer, to better understand it and to prepare to bring any, anything forward to this body, that request for additional information was not met, and so we had no choice. It was not our decision to make whether or not to close on the property. That was between the private bidder and the private owner of the hotel.
Do you know whether they lost their earnest money that they had to put up, the $10,000, to enter the bidding process?
I'm not directly aware of that, but I would assume that earnest money was lost as a result of this.
Or did they fail to provide earnest money? I mean, I guess I was sort of wondering about the details of how this bidding process ended up working out.
Many of the details, city staff is not privy to, because there was both a private owner, a private auction house, and a private broker. And, you know, at times, we were told things, but certainly not in a position to, you know, speak on behalf of a process we were given no direct knowledge of.
Okay. I just had a lot of questions about it, and the more information we have, the more we stand in awareness of what the future will hold.
Thank you.
Eric.
Have we considered the possibility of purchasing the property, engaging an excellent management company, and running the hotel? And I realize that's not what we want to do, but I'm looking at all of the possibilities, and especially, I'm looking at the extraordinary cost of demolishing the building, plus the loss of a distinctive landmark. At the end of the day, is it completely out of the question, or should we consider the feasibility of purchasing and through a management company operating the hotel?
Can I take that one?
Carol.
We've been trying to glean what we can from the market as we've moved through this process and learn what we can, and the market is not telling us to run the hotel. I am, I'm confident of that. What's been happening is that because the property is closed and it's not being taken care of, that the value continues to diminish, so the value proposition, you know, is very tenuous, you know, even at the $1.2 million that the property was under contract for. That's with everyone acknowledging that the deal that needed, that could go forward would have a hole in it. That's, that would be the city's role. We're still enriching the property owner to the tune of $1.2 million in that transaction for a property that's, that's effectively worth nothing, because it cannot be economically redeveloped, you know, on market terms. So for the city to step into that in a, in a way that, that takes on all the risk associated with the transaction and making it good, that's, that's not something that, that any of us would advise.
And the condition of the building is such, it's going to require millions of dollars before you would want to open it again.
Okay. I guess that answers my question.
Any other questions? No? Thank you very much. Oh, hold on. Jared?
So the number-one thing that I always get asked by people who don't understand, one, that the city doesn't own the hotel, and why don't we tear it down, is why don't they tear it down? And I guess I'm just curious if we have any idea of understanding as to where we stand legally in matters for taking possession of the property and/or how long something like this can stand vacant before it's just become where demolition is the only option.
Well, the legal part of it, I wish you would answer, Mr. Simon.
Theoretically, if we acquired the property, we could demolish it, but the demolition would be very complex and very costly because of its connection to the mall. The demolition, I've heard numbers tossed around of in excess of $2 million to demolish the property. What we're left with would be presumably a desirable property. Obviously, there's a lot of risk in demolition, especially risk of damaging that section of the mall. In terms of other legal risk, I think the last thing you would want, separate from the financial risk, is the legal risk of a hotel that's, has a leaky roof, has fire alarm problems, has elevator problems, has electrical problems, and all kinds of other outdated systems that create problems. From a strictly legal perspective, I would strongly urge against the city acquiring or having any part in managing or controlling the hotel.
Could you address the issue of the landmark status, though, from a legal perspective? What's, what are?
Well, to do any, because the property is landmark, which would include the newer part that was built in, I believe, the 80s. Is that correct, Brandon? Any, any work that has to be done on the exterior would have to go before the Historic Preservation Commission. There are procedures in our Historic Preservation Ordinance that allows for changes in the materials used or relaxing of design, but again, that's a, that's a process that the owner or whoever would have to go through to obtain approval for those less-than-equal materials. In terms of demolition of the property, the ordinance does provide and allow for demolition if the property cannot be made economically viable. Now, in order for the city to come in, even though we don't own the property, and order a demolition of the property, it has to be in a condition which is unsafe. Unsafe to the public, unsafe to neighboring property owners. That's only the beginning part. The second part is, the city would have to prove that the cost of repairs to the building exceed the value of the building, not the property in total, because the land clearly has value. And that would require appraisals and cost analysis, and I suspect it would probably meet, given what we've been told, the cost of renovating and fixing up the building. That's not a matter of restoring the building. It's just restoring it so it's a functioning and safe facility. But again, nobody's ever put, that I know of, has put pen to paper to calculate the cost of bringing the entire building, you know, up to where it could operate in its, whatever, without the branding and all that, in its current, you know, somebody owning it and running it as a hotel. Not an easy process.
Dean.
Well, I was going to ask. You kind of answered my question for me, but how far are we from it being unsafe? And is the owner aware that we are that close to it?
We, we are, you know, we are in frankly, constant contact with the owner. He has not had his alarm system inspected. We've given him a date by which he has to do that. John knows more about the details of the actual structure as it exists right now.
So my, my question is, how far away is it from being unsafe, and is the, is the owner in tune to this? Because at some point, he has to know, or she has to know, that it's going to hit that point eventually.
Well, our staff does regular inspections, and when we do walkthroughs, we determine, as an example, more recently, we had some issue with the security, so we required them to either hire security detail 24 hours a day, 24, you know, seven days a week, or they had to secure a couple of doors. So he chose to secure the door so they couldn't, people couldn't get in, gain easy access. So basically, they respond generally and repair the items that need to be repaired. The roof is still in pretty decent shape. It has a leak that his contractor is trying to find a window of time to get in there to repair, is my understanding, but other than that, that building's been there for a long time. I mean, it had a leaking roof for, for several years, I think, before he even purchased it. One of the first things he did was he put a new roof on it. So as long as the roof's in decent shape and, you know, there's nothing that's happening that inside the building is causing deterioration, so it'd be weather deterioration on the exterior, and that'd be about it.
So we're years away from, from it being declared a fire hazard, or?
I don't know that I can tell you exactly when that, that would happen.
I was just trying to get a feel for that, so. Sounds like it's a while away. All right. Thank you.
Bill.
Yeah, it sounds like this was improvement from the first offer, in the sense that they wanted money upfront, and this was a rebate sort of deal where we wouldn't have as much risk, although it would still supposedly take money from other taxes, taxes that we would have maybe gotten from other hotels, and it also would have brought a lot of business to downtown. So I'm kind of thinking along the same lines as Dennis, as far as trying to specify what we are willing to offer, and if there's some use to that, and realizing that we might not get the same quality of hotel with 15, $20 million investment, maybe 10 to 15 million, and, you know, how many years of rebates would we provide? Have you, did you have those kind of discussions with the dozen or so people and developers that expressed interest?
Certainly, when, at the time, they were expressing interest, I could just tell you that I observed with more than one group, we would have a very nice meeting, talking about what they felt was productive, or what they could accomplish at the property, and then they would go through it. And often, the enthusiasm was sort of drained out of folks. We saw many developers who had formulated one opinion, and then after a walkthrough, had perhaps changed their mind to some extent. More importantly, though, once a developer becomes fully informed on, on, you know, what the, the property is, they still have to make the choice to, to put an offer in on the property, and that's the only way we know if they're serious, and that's a very significant condition for us to be in a position to negotiate in earnest. And it, it does take a good amount of staff time to really start to get into that process, really on both sides of the table. So we've only really gotten to that stage with those who were declared, you know, a high bidder or had an option in the past, so we weren't able to get to that level of detail. However, I will say, we, we have, it's, as the mayor said, the serious proposals we've received have all been at the higher end of potential redevelopment costs. And one potential explanation for that is that the revenues you need to receive from the property, once you've made that scale of investment, the only kind of use we, we know that you can get that good return on is the higher-end hotel. And so that's perhaps why it's unsurprising that those who've gotten to that point so far have been higher-end hotels. It's certainly possible, and we will continue to meet with anyone who has an alternative idea, but unless someone can figure out how to renovate the property for less and, and produce a revenue stream that covers that, you know, we, we don't expect we're going to be in a negotiation with anyone unless they've figured that one out.
Can I, I just want to add, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What I wanted to add is that one of the things that we did consistently represent to people is that the city was not prepared to put money upfront, that it would only be, what we would offer would be in terms of foregone revenues, which shifts the entire burden for getting the hotel renovated and up and running onto the developer, because that's not a risk that the city's in a position to bear. But the other piece that I just want to make sure you understand from what Brandon was saying is that it's not like there's a package that we're offering, you know, at this, at that point, when you're getting to the kinds of incentives that are necessary, it really becomes a kind of a partnership, and the person you're negotiating with has to be a worthy partner. And so what we might be willing to offer, one developer with a lot of experience and resources, would not necessarily translate to someone else.
And each developer comes in with an idea of what level to which they want to, to renovate the hotel and achieve, and the latest one, for example, had a very high standard, which was great, but that also had a challenge in that, in this market, you know, your top room rates on a regular basis can be about $120 a night. You don't get the $200 and $300 a night, except on some of the special weekends. So, so the, the quality has to be balanced against your potential revenues, and that's also what makes it very difficult to, to make the numbers work. It's just, it's just a really tough situation.
Dennis?
So have we looked at other options besides it being renovated as a hotel, and has any developer come forward who imagines it as a residential living quarters, which would, if they, if they found clients to occupy the rooms, and if the hotel was in satisfactory safety condition, would give them immediate income, and it would not necessarily be based on hotel occupancy rates, which are sometimes less than 60%, even in really fine hotels during low periods in the month or the year?
Yes. We would certainly be happy to consider that. I mean, it's not, there are potentially other uses for the building other than as, as a hotel, so if someone came forward with a proposal, we'd certainly be willing to look at that one.
But nobody has, at, to this point, that we are aware of?
Not at this point.
Jim?
But we remain hopeful.
Since the city doesn't own the hotel, they would have, whoever is interested in developing it into whatever, student housing, residential, you know, assisted-living facility, whatever, is going to have to approach the owner. And I don't know if any of you have ever stayed in the hotel. I lived there for five months when I first started here, and the bathrooms aren't heated, they aren't ventilated, the floors are not heated, the heating in the rooms, at least when I was there, didn't function. I was there and... I was there in, from basically the end of November to April, into April. Let's put it this way, it was not an overly pleasant place to spend any time. I felt like I was in a Dickensian novel, living there.
Well, I mean, even, even as, no matter what its future use would be, it will require a multimillion dollar investment and, and major renovation. So that's, that's where you start. But yeah, there are potentially other uses.
Right.
Which might make more sense, actually.
And it's not such a good thing to downgrade the hotel by our personal experiences, which may or may not be true today.
Well, it's, it's potential. There's a lot of, you know.
All right, any other questions or comments? Jared, do you have another question? All right, thank you. All right, let's start the evening off with resolution number 2018.
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion consent agenda.
I just, I just wanted to get your reaction to the great example you, you gave us last week of, of a potential consent agenda omnibus vote procedure. Did you like it or not? One, two.
Sure, we think we're wonderful.
Okay. Okay, so, so, you know, it, it was a perfect way, you know, to, to get us started. Again, the, the council report, the committee report to council was split into two parts, an omnibus potential section and a, and a regular debate section. And so, you know, if you want to just keep practicing that, what I'd suggest is that you, at each item that comes to committee, that you point them to a consent agenda portion, you know, that, that same two-part type thing that we did last week. So tonight, for example, there are three ordinances and resolutions that are potentially pretty much boilerplate. You could send those to the omnibus section as part of your recommendation.
And would that be part of a motion? How would that be?
Yeah, you would just, you know, you know, when, when, we have a little more flexibility in committee, when, when council member Jacobson sent it to council with a recommendation, he put all three together, and that was, that's one way to do it. But you could equally do it and say, okay, I, I move to send this resolution to council with a recommendation for approval, and a recommendation to put it in the omnibus. And if somebody objects right then and there about the omnibus, that'll be a good place to pull it out, and then just send it to, to council. But, you know, you could sort of do the double recommendation there, in one motion.
That would also require us to all be able to pronounce that word correctly.
Which one was that?
I can't pronounce it.
Omnibus, omnibus. You can say consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
You can say consent agenda.
Yes, yes. All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, all right, well, we will give it a try.
Okay. Go practice.
Now we get to move on to resolution number 2018-11-052R, a resolution estimating the tax levy fiscal year 2018-2019, finance.
So here we are again for our annual exercise, with a little bit of a twist this year. First of all, I'm going to really quickly run through some property tax basics. I know you are all familiar with this, but we may have citizens watching on TV who are not. So in our property tax system in Illinois, properties are assessed at one-third of fair market value. That's the equalized assessed valuation. Exemptions may be applied, which reduce the taxing value. The most common one is the $6,000 exemption for owner-occupied properties. So the taxing value, the actual amount that the property taxes are based on, is the assessed value less the taxing value, less the exemptions. So for example, $150,000 home, assessed at one-third of market value, or $50,000, if that home is owner-occupied, then the exemption of $6,000 reducing, that reduces the taxing value to $44,000. That's the amount on which their property tax bill will be based. Each taxing district, the city, the school district, the park, park district, the township, all the others, levies their own taxes. So the county calculates the total tax rate for a particular property by adding the tax rates for all of the individual taxing districts that are applicable to that property. So for most properties in Urbana, the city's property taxes are only about 13% of the total property tax bill that a resident would receive. Also, just as a matter of timing, taxes that we levy now in 2018, we will not receive until the levy is extended in 2019, and will receive those taxes generally between May and September 2019.
Elizabeth, repeat number three again for the audience to be very aware.
Yes, I will. So for most properties in Urbana, the, the city's portion of the property tax bill is about 13% of the total. And we're going to look at that here on a chart. So this is the current tax levy, the 2017 tax levy. And as you can see, the, the big, kind of dusty purple piece is the school district, that's more than half, 56%. And then there's some of the other large, larger tax, taxing districts, the parks, the county, Parkland College. I've lumped a bunch of others into one piece here. That's things like the Forest Preserve, the Public Health District, the Township. But here, here, that brighter blue piece is the city's portion is 13%. So that's how your property tax bill, if you live in Urbana, breaks out. So to maintain a stable tax rate, what the city does is we adjust the levy to increase or decrease with assessed value for the city as a whole. For the 2018 tax levy, my best estimate is that our assessments will increase by about 1.8%. So pretty modest increase, but better than what we did have for many years in the past. If, in the unlikely event that hospital properties were included when the tax levy is extended, then our assessed value would increase by about 21.5%. So that's a pretty significant difference. And just to take a look, yes, Jared?
Elizabeth, are you saying that the 1.8 plus 21.5? Or you're saying that the 21.5 includes the 1.8%?
Yes, 21.5 includes the 1.8.
Okay, thank you.
So just looking at our trends in assessed value, this goes back to 2008, and you can see what's happened over time. We get here, down here in 2012, 2013, where the hospital properties came off the tax rolls. And also, at that point, we kind of saw the delayed reaction to the Great Recession, where we finally, that usually happens on the tail end of a recession, property values start to decline. So both of those things really hit us hard here, until we got to a low point here in 2013, and then we started to see some very, very modest growth. So this last column here, 2018, is my estimate of what we'll see for assessed value. That's the green portion. And then the blue portion adds on what we might potentially see if those hospital properties were back on the tax rolls. So, since we're talking about hospital taxes here, we believe it's possible, probably not likely, but it's possible that those properties could be included in the assessed value on which our levy is extended. So again, that would result in a, an assessed value that's $110 million higher, or thereabouts. So our goal here, as we talk about the details of the levy, is to maintain the current tax rate of $135.5, or if those additional properties, hospital properties are included on the tax rolls, then we would like to move to reduce the rate to $131.52, which is exactly the City of Champaign tax rate, which puts us in a more competitive position with the City of Champaign.
Elizabeth, is it, is it definitely an all-or-nothing proposition? I mean, seems like the hospitals might only apply for the credit on fewer buildings, and...
Yeah, I don't think it's clearly an all-or-nothing, and I'll be working with legal on the language that'll get us where we want to be.
Maybe have like some tiers of, of different rates we would use under different conditions or something?
Something like that.
Okay.
So just, just to show you how much a homeowner would pay in city property taxes, oops, at both of those tax rates, so $131.52 and $135.5. So I've included properties from $100,000 to $250,000 here. But I'm going to just, just read you the example for $150,000, because that's closest to our median property value. At $131.52, a homeowner would pay $579 in city property taxes. And $135.5, that same homeowner would pay $596 in city property taxes. Now again, that's just our part of a much larger tax bill. That's our 13%. So for our, our specifics of our tax levy for 2018, we levy taxes, taxes for four purposes. We levy for police pensions, for fire pensions, for the library's operations, and for corporate purposes, which is the portion of the levy that goes into the general operating fund. And that pays for services like police and fire protection, most public work services, just basic city services. So the library's tax levy, we are proposing $3,272,000. That's based on the budget that the, that the city council reviewed for the library. That's just the amount that they would need to support what's in their current budget. That's an increase of about 62,000 or 1.93%, so a pretty modest increase. And it's worth noting that the library is very dependent on property tax revenue. It makes up the vast majority of their revenue, which is unlike our general fund, where property tax is really just a relatively small piece of a much, much larger budget. For police and firefighter pensions, we're recommending a total levy for both of those funds combined of $2,528,12. That is based on the funding policy that was approved by the city council in May of 2018. You'll probably recall when we adopted revised financial policies for the cities that included, the city that included a new pension funding policy. So our goal now is to be 100% funded in 20 years, and this is the first year of a five-year transition to that higher level of funding. So this is basically taking action on that policy that you approved. That is for both pension funds combined, a $345,000 increase roughly, or about 15.83%. That was, that was not unanticipated. I mean, that was built into the forecast. We expected that that would be ramping up over time. So the corporate levy, again, the part that goes into the general fund, that's the part that we adjust to maintain a stable tax rate. So when we, when the levy is extended by the county clerk, and we give them instructions about how to adjust that, this is the part that they'll be adjusting. So based on maintaining the same tax rate, the $135.5 tax rate, that portion of the property tax levy will be, will decrease by about $270,000, or 12.4%. Again, not unexpected, that was built into the forecast, and that's very much related to increasing the pension funding. If hospital properties were included in the assessments, that portion of the levy would actually increase by about $951,000. And it's worth noting that that additional $951,000 would reduce or mitigate the need for additional budget reductions that we're expecting we will make over the next two years, but it won't, it would not fully eliminate the need for budget reductions. So based on last year's forecast, and you'll see an updated version soon, we'd still need to cut probably another $550,000 in expenditures in the general fund, unfortunately, but that's the reality. So this, this chart just shows basically all the components of the tax levy over time from 2013 to 2018. This second bar from the right is what we expect at the $135.5 rate, and then the bar furthest to the right is the alternate scenario. The portion at the bottom is the library, which as you can see, has grown fairly slowly over time. The green portion in the middle is the pensions. And you can see here where we reduced pension funding down to the state minimum, we saw a little increase then in the corporate levy as a result of that. But then, even here in 2016 to 2017, again, because of the impact of that minimum funding on our unfunded liability, even at the minimum, our contributions were starting to grow. So just kind of gives you a picture, picture over time of the components. So just to wrap this up, to complete the tax levy process, you would need to adopt our estimated levy next week, and that's the resolution that's in your packet. We would then advertise and hold a public hearing on December 3rd. And the final tax levy would, would come to council for approval on December 17th. And that would be a package of items. It would include a tax levy ordinance, an abatement to reduce the levy for bonds for 2012 and 2014 bonds, because we're paying that debt service from other sources, and also include a resolution to abate the levy to achieve our targeted tax rate, depending on the circumstances. So that's the tax levy recommendation.
All right, questions? Dennis?
What other resources were being used to reduce the bond payment? What you just told us in the last slide?
I'm probably going to mix these up, but between 2012 and 2014, and one does, one is funded from one of the TIF funds, and one is funded from local motor fuel tax. And I think it's 2014 is when's erode, and that's the local motor fuel tax. And 2012, I think, is the Boneyard Creek improvements, and that's TIF funds.
Okay.
All right, Bill?
As far as timing goes on the, when we find out whether the hospitals are going on the tax rolls or not, and how that affects the abatement. I remember the first year I was on council, it was really kind of disastrous, because we'd passed, or maybe I wasn't on yet, but somebody had passed the levy, and then the hospitals applied late that year, like the end of December or something, after the levy was passed. And so nobody knew that that was coming. And then, so we got like a 10 or 15% less, without really having any warning. So I, from what I understand, by doing it this way, it avoids that, because the county clerk or somebody applies this rate after they know whether the hospitals are on there or not.
Right, exactly. In the process of extending the levy, the county clerk will look at our, our abatements that we've provided. And this is very similar to what we did in 2016. And so we'll have that abatement that will say, you know, in this situation, do this, we want a rate of $135.5, so basically cap that corporate levy to make that happen, or in the alternative, do this.
Okay, sounds good to me.
I'm confident our county clerk will know what to do.
Other questions for Elizabeth? Jared?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to make a motion.
Awesome.
I'm going to move resolution number 2018-11-052R. This resolution is estimating the tax levy for FY 2019, forward to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Eric. Discussion? Aaron?
Mr. City Clerk, or Mr. Attorney, do I need to recuse myself? Okay, just want to make sure.
Are you sworn in?
Oh, okay, right.
All right, any other discussion? Is this going to the consent agenda, or is this going to be going to the full agenda?
I don't think consent agenda.
Just checking. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that moves forward. Ordinance number 2018-11-076, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number seven, not going to say the word. Elizabeth?
Omnibus.
Thank you.
I, I am going to note that, since you've been discussing consent agendas, budget amendments require a supermajority. And so for that reason, this would probably not be an appropriate item to place on a consent agenda. So here we are again, our seventh budget amendment of the year. These seem to keep happening. This really, again, is just a, a collection of items that have come up that need to be addressed. There's a need for some additional funding for relocation assistance in, in the community development department. That would be $10,000. And then a number of items in the public works department. We have a revised estimate for the installation of exhaust systems in our fire stations. We have a revised estimate for the installation of exhaust systems in our fire stations, and so we'll require an additional $17,000 for that, bringing the total to $110,000. Some adjustments related to our new Ameren Electric franchise agreement, which was approved We have also included some additional revenue and expense related to our Under the Canopy publication, which comes from the Arbor Division. The Department of, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources has asked the city to distribute about half a million copies of that publication around the state. And so they would, the cost for us to produce those would be about $145,000, and they would pay us $185,000 to provide those. So that's a net of $40,000 in revenue to the general fund. A number of rebudgets on capital improvement projects, these are just timing issues. And then some specific programs in the Arbor Division that are funded by donations. We also need to rebudget those funds to make sure that those donations are spent consistent with the intent of the donors.
Questions? All right, no questions. Eric?
Just a congratulation to Mike. We usually, all the departments are totally defined by expenditures. It's very seldom that we make a profit on anything that we do, so that's great.
All right, Jared?
I'll also say to Mike that that publication has been an awesome tool, and I remember when I got it, when I moved to the city years ago, and I still reference it when I am curious about what I need to do about my trees, or, you know, how I'm supposed to be trimming them and how I take care of them, and it's extraordinarily well-written, beautifully illustrated, and I think it makes things super easy to understand for a lot of homeowners. So I'm not surprised that the Illinois DNR is looking at that and saying, wow, well, we're probably not gonna make anything better than this, so might as well go ahead and use what's already out there. So I just wanted to mention that.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to send ordinance 2018-11-077, which is, no, 2018-11-076, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance. This is budget amendment number seven to the city council with approval. Recommendation.
Second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That one moves forward. Thank you very much. Ordinance Number 2018-11-077, an ordinance repealing ordinance Number 2018-08-054, and amending Urbana City Code regarding changes in administrative officer positions. Jim?
The memo basically says it all. You earlier in the year approved essentially this ordinance, but for some reason, our online code service asked us to make some further changes. They were not sure that the draft that was approved was clear to them. It was very clear to me, but rather than fighting with them, you know, I'm suggesting repealing the prior ordinance and replacing it with this one.
All right, so I'm curious, does that require two motions to repeal, or just one? Okay, all right. Any questions for Jim? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that I guess by approving this ordinance, we will be repealing. It's not a motion to repeal, is it?
The ordinance is drafted, does both.
Okay. So I will move ordinance Number 2018-11-077, which is an ordinance repealing ordinance Number 2018-08-054, and also amends the Urbana City Code regarding changes in administrator officer positions, forward to full council with recommendation for approval.
Moved by Jared, and I think Bill got in there for a second. Oh, it's Dennis, sorry. Thank you. All right, moved by Jared, seconded by Dennis. Do we want to move that to the omnibus?
I would recommend, see, you got it.
Yeah, but we want to practice, right? All right.
I would recommend consent agenda for this item.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All righty. Resolution Number 2018-11-05R, resolution approving amendment number one to a non-endowed fund agreement with the Community Foundation of East Central Illinois Legacy Tree Program, Public Works.
This resolution just allow, it will allow us to accept a $10,000 donation from Dr. Holly Rosenkrantz and Warren Levy, and you are aware of their generous donation as well as doing some housekeeping in our agreement with the Community Foundation.
All right, awesome. I keep thinking that we should have like a holiday wish list, so we convince neighbors to like contribute to the tree fund.
I'm sure Mike would love to entertain that idea.
Eric?
I'm just gonna put in a plug for a wonderful new novel by a writer with Urbana roots, Richard Powers. And this book is called The Overstory. It's a novel where, I don't know if you've seen that yet, Mike, but it's incredibly good. All of the characters are united by their relationship to trees.
He used to live in Ward 4. I'm not sure if he still does, so I'm sure he got some inspiration from our canopies.
Well, he lived, now, he moved to Stanford, and so a lot of this book is about the redwoods on the West Coast.
He lived on Birch Street.
He lived on Birch Street.
He was my neighbor.
Yes.
All right, motion? Anyone?
I will make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-11-053R.
I'll second it.
Moved by Dean, seconded by Jared. Any questions? Would you like to move that to the consent agenda, so we don't have, we have more than one?
I prefer to use the O-word.
Omnibus?
Yes.
I have a cheat sheet over here. Omnibus. All right, so this is, any discussion to move this forward? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, discussion, Mayor Council Priorities 2018-2021, continuation of October 22nd, 2018, discussion. Carol?
Thank you. So I want to continue the conversation that we started a few weeks ago tonight, and I'm hoping that you will not be distracted by the poor quality of my slide deck. I did it myself. My graphic skills were not why you hired me. They get less fancy. At the time that we ended the conversation that we started a few weeks ago, I was asked to recommend what we should turn our attention to first, and that's the intent of the presentation I'll make tonight. So what I want to share with you, I hope, will provide a critical reference point not only for the discussion of Mayor Council Priorities, but also for the upcoming discussion of development opportunities that will be before you in the next few months, and following those, the FY 20 budget. The city of Urbana has a structural deficit. You have heard Mayor Marlin and Finance Director Elizabeth Hannan explain this many times. It bears repeating that a structural deficit results when ongoing expenditures outpace ongoing revenues. This is not a cyclical problem that will solve itself with time. The city is taking specific actions to address it, and it will take years. There are multiple long-term approaches to solving a structural deficit. One of the steps we have committed to long-term is a growth strategy, growing our tax base. However, in the short term, we have taken a number of cost-saving steps outlined in our budget document, and will continue to do so. These steps can't continue indefinitely without undesirable service reductions that will actually undermine our growth strategy. Now, you've seen this graphic before, although it now has a variety of colors on it that are use-specific, and we can circulate this separately. It shows that more than a quarter of the city's land area is exempt from property tax. This stems from our role as the Champagne County seat, and all county facilities, home of the University of Illinois campus, two regional medical centers, a closed landfill, and many other educational government and educational properties are all included in those colored areas. In order to offset the property tax revenue loss and remain competitive regionally, we need to add value to the remaining taxable properties. We will do that by thoughtfully promoting new development where possible and reasonable infill development. In the weeks to come, there will be announcements of new developments, some of which will require financial support from the city. You will have to decide what you want to invest in, how you want to build on the foundation for the future. So let me run through some of those developments. First, we will have the development agreement for 200 South Vine Street. If approved by the council, this project will be the first new residential development in downtown Urbana in 13 years. At our average household size of 2.2 persons, it will bring almost 100 new residents downtown to where they can shop, work, and recreate, all without getting in a car if they so choose. It is the kind of development that reflects the values of Urbana for a living downtown and in a sustainable community. There is also a city-owned site in play. The location must remain confidential at this time, but it's downtown. This site may become the subject of an affordable housing proposal by an experienced affordable housing developer that would bring another 35 units of housing downtown, including some live workspaces for artists and a community arts space. That would be another 77 new residents downtown. There are also a few projects in the works that are notable because they will not require investment from the city beyond our standard grant offerings. Last week, you voted to approve the annexation of the land under contract to Trinitas for the Union Gardens development. Through that action and earlier rezoning, you expanded our overall land area of taxable property by eight acres, enabled a project that will increase the value of the underlying property significantly, and you set the stage for several hundred new residents to complement the existing activity in northwest Urbana and add their buying power to the demand for goods and services in that area. Last week, you also approved the rezoning of several parcels of land at the corner of University Avenue and Race Street. Although the identity of the eventual user remains confidential, we expect that a new retail entity will be located there, which will add to the vitality of downtown and the adjacent park areas, and increase the property tax base and sales tax receipts. Finally, several major infrastructure projects will support and enhance these new housing developments as well as commercial activity. These include the reconstruction of Green Street from Lincoln Avenue to Race Street as part of the M-Cor project, that's actually BUC Avenue to Race Street. Green Street will become the main connection between campus and downtown Urbana and deliver people to the doorstep of Lincoln Square. University Avenue will be resurfaced. Many safety upgrades also will be made to this important corridor between Wright Street and Maple Street. The new lighting sidewalks and crosswalks will greatly enhance connectivity between downtown and the rest of the community. We have also received a grant to study the feasibility of extending the Kickapoo Rail Trail from east Urbana through the city to Lincoln Avenue. This trail will increase connectivity, enhance recreational and tourism opportunities, and promote health and wellness. I highlight these projects, both private and public investments, for a couple of reasons. First, Urbana is becoming an increasingly desirable place to open a business and to live, but the economics of new development, particularly market-rate residential, are still tenuous. We may need to incentivize some new development, but our constrained resources mean we have to be selective in doing so, and the Landmark Hotel is a very good example of that. Second, I think the level of activity downtown is especially promising and provides an important opportunity. Third, a number of these projects are moving forward because they are occurring on city-owned property. Although we are still subject to changes in overall market conditions and competitive forces, eliminating uncertainty and leveraging our assets where we can will help us be more successful. It also helps that moving properties onto the tax rolls in a TIF district can produce increment for reinvestment. When we discussed council priorities three weeks ago, you seemed interested in taking on one priority at a time and considering the necessary resource allocation in order to really move the needle. You asked me for a recommendation of what we should tackle first. When I look at the mayor council priorities through the lens that I just described, that is, promising growth taking place, much of it in downtown, some of which is free of incentives, but tax revenues still need to increase before our structural deficit is cured, I focus on which of the priorities is most likely to advance that growth. For me, there is no question that priority number one is the first priority we should take on. So priority number one, just to refresh everyone's memory, is with consideration of the downtown as a whole, initiate and plan for the transformation of the Lincoln Square site into a destination. The 2012 Downtown Plan's vision statement is as valid today as it was when it was written. Downtown Urbana is the heart of our city. It is built at a human scale and embraces the historic urban fabric while also promoting a high quality of compatible new building development in appropriate locations. It is an economically vibrant environment with welcoming public spaces and an active arts and culture scene. Downtown is accessible to all and well-connected to surrounding neighborhoods and to the university. The mix of businesses, residences, and other attractions in our downtown helps to promote sustainable, healthy lifestyles. The Downtown Plan is a good foundation to build on, allowing, of course, for some modifications for six years of intervening reality. The authors of the plan tried to tie implementation of the plan to a list of priorities for TIF spending. I would argue that the success of that approach was uneven because the priorities were too numerous and the expectations about revenues too generous. The plan also left largely unanswered a series of questions that are important for us to be able to answer very soon, if not immediately. Here are some of the key issues that were identified in the Downtown Plan and the questions they raised for me. Downtown needs better interconnectivity. The plan specifically addresses connections between the farmer's market and Main Street, and between other activity generators like the library and the rest of downtown. So the questions for me. What is the best location and configuration for the farmer's market? How can dynamic urban pedestrian connections be built through Lincoln Square Mall? What is the best location for the future MTD transit facility such that it will benefit residents and business owners in Urbana? The next key issue. A related issue affecting downtown is a lack of critical mass, including lack of housing units within downtown property, proper. The questions for me, how can we support greater residential density in downtown Urbana? Specifically, which sites are appropriate and targeted for residential development? When will we have design standards that ensure the pedestrian experience is desirable for street-level retail and uses that activate the public realm? The third key issue, downtown Urbana also could benefit from more vibrant public spaces. Again, the location of the farmer's market informs this area of need. Can the farmer's market space be designed to create a flexible public space that can be used any day of the week, any time of the day? Do the investments in various public spaces reflect the strong need to activate those spaces as much as possible? For instance, access to something simple like electricity, parking, restrooms. Again, do we have design standards that protect the public realm? So before I go further, let me repeat So before I go further, let me repeat priority number one. With consideration of the downtown as a whole, initiate and plan for transformation of the Lincoln Square site into a destination. The nine-block area that comprises the Lincoln Square site is the most important opportunity we have to address interconnectivity downtown, develop a critical mass of various land uses, but especially residential downtown, and create an iconic new public realm in downtown So why should this investment be top priority at this time? We have the opportunity to build on the what's in your square visioning process. No one who was interviewed is interested in preserving the status quo. The City of Urbana facilities' master planning process will provide critical information regarding city-owned sites in downtown. The master plan needs to both inform and respond to ongoing planning and economic development activities downtown. A visioning process is about to begin for the market at the square, and that process needs to allow for a fulsome exploration of all configurations that could be possible for the market going forward. The outcome of that process will impact Lincoln Square. A parking study was recently completed for downtown that shows a significant surplus of parking spaces. Surface parking spaces should be prime targets for new development. The parking agreement with the owner of Lincoln Square Mall for the city-owned lots south of the mall expire in 2034. Fifteen years is not too soon to begin planning for the changes possible once that agreement expires. The MTD is very keen to identify an option for their downtown Urbana transit facility. We have to plan for the most appropriate site, or they may acquire a parcel of land and move forward based on current rather than future-oriented planning. We have to focus our future TIF expenditures directly, albeit not exclusively, on building EAV. Our budget situation demands that we place more explicit emphasis on getting tangible financial results. And finally, Champagne County appears to be moving toward relocating all downtown jail services and administrative offices to the facility in east Urbana, thus freeing the county-owned site on Main Street. The potential for this site has not been specifically considered in our previous planning efforts. So after all of that, what I would like your support to do is make priority number one the first priority you want to address in this non-routine way of resource allocation. And second, seriously entertain a proposal to be developed by staff to leverage all of the efforts I just enumerated by reallocating resources to move the needle on this critical and timely opportunity. Thank you.
Questions? I guess we don't have a motion, so we can merge questions and comments, correct? So comments, comments or questions? Jared?
I guess I'll just start us off with Diane's. I was curious on your perspective. I know we kind of discussed this as council, and this is probably new since even you were on council to focus and say, oh, we're going to use city resources to do this one specifically or something like that. I was just curious what your thoughts were on how you determine our effectiveness in using this method to get something done.
Well, I have to say, over the years that I was a council member, I was pretty frustrated a lot of times by our previous method of setting, you know, 57,000 council goals and, you know, making kind of sporadic, although we made progress on them, but it was very diffuse. And I think it's critically important that we focus with laser-like attention on this particular initiative. So I think we have an opportunity to make a real difference, particularly if we focus.
Dennis?
Because the mall is in private ownership, what's the progress that, or what is the process that we can actually use to make some of these goals that you suggest, Carol? I'm thinking, you know, maybe in particular about reconfiguration of the mall itself, should that be happening, or, you know, to open up spaces that have maybe stronger connectivity, obvious or not obvious, I don't know. And then also, the parking of the, the use of the parking lot, obviously, there's way too much surface parking, but if there's a demand for parking by the tenants or the development of the mall itself, or even if the hotel was developed further, how can we replace or reallocate parking if that's necessary? These are like questions that are like, I think, pretty difficult, actually.
They are difficult. I mean, the first question that you raised, which is the fact that the mall is in private ownership, let's not forget that, you know, at various times over the years, the owner of the mall has entertained, I will use an umbrella, change, the opportunity for change. Whether that change has been realized is, I would say it largely has not been, but it hasn't been that there's been a reluctance to entertain opportunities for change. It's the value proposition that I think has been the challenge. And I would say that the fact that the parking agreements will expire in 15 years is an opportunity to change the value proposition and leverage our asset, which is the parking lots, in order to, you know, let's just assume that all the parking is, even if, even if we assume that all the parking is needed, which the parking study has proven that we have an oversupply, but let's just say that it was all needed, we could still free up sites by building structured parking where there is now surface parking. So there's an opportunity to do that. I just think that, you know, because it's complicated, that's why we need to start now. But there's a tremendous opportunity that, you know, there's a strong desire and, you know, when we're, when we're ready, we will be presenting to all of you the results of the what's in your square visioning process. But there's a very strong desire to reimagine the Lincoln Square blocks, including the mall, with a much more dynamic and, you know, a much greener experience. I mean, there's a lot of desire for green space and a more interesting and dynamic pedestrian experience. So people are craving it. We just, it's up to us to figure out the value proposition for all the parties involved to make it work.
Can I add one thing? One of, this is on the what's in your square. We saw kind of a preliminary summary of the results today, and what was surprising to, I think, all of us was the demographics of the respondents of the survey, and over half, I believe, were in their 20s and 30s. So that's the age group that was really excited about imagining the future, and that's the age group we want to attract and keep in our community to live and work and raise a family. And also, they'll be living with that, whatever is at that property, you know, for decades to come. So I'm really excited about the interest from the 20 and 30-year-olds.
I think Eric had a question. And then we'll go back.
I'll just say that I really support this as priority one because it makes everything else that we wish to do that requires any resources at all more possible.
Yes.
And there's no other priority that has, where, that all the other priorities depend on.
Dennis?
Well, and I also, I haven't seen the results of this, of the what's in your square. I will soon, but I have a feeling that there's a need or a desire to have a communal, a communal space downtown, which might be called like a city square or something. And it sounded like if you're reimagining green space around the Lincoln Square Mall, it'd be curious to find out like what corner, you know, one considers to place such a central location facility. And I have opinions about that, but I guess we're not here to like talk about specifics right now. But it does seem to be something that's missing in the community, and I would be real excited to hear more about that.
So Charlie?
That's what we would, if I may, that's what, this whole idea, priority number one is about exploring what are the opportunities that could be created in order to transform the Lincoln Square site. So without answering any of those questions, we're never going to answer the questions if we don't undertake the analysis to look at the world of possibilities, and that's what we'd like to do. And just to the mayor's point, you know, we've been living with Lincoln Square Mall for over 50 years, if I remember correctly. And, you know, this is a legacy piece that we're talking about. This is making decisions at this point, you know, at this, at this juncture where we have an opportunity because of a convergence of many things, that it's, what do you want downtown to look like for the next 50 or 60 years? It's really, will it happen all at once, like the building of the mall? No, it won't, but it's, it's that kind of long-term thinking that we need to engage in.
Charlie, I have some comments. I'm wondering if I need to pass the chair.
No, not, this is general discussion here.
Okay, all right. Well, first I want to say that I absolutely support priority number one. I think that it's very important. It's a big piece of our community. I do also want to caution, I'm hesitant to support only looking at one priority at a time. Our council goals were for three years, and priority number one's big. It's not going to be done fast. And so I feel that if we only tackle one priority at a time, that basically everything else is going to be lost. So what I would like to propose is that several of the priorities, in my opinion, and you can tell me otherwise, don't actually rely on the same staffing. So planning, I think, is heavily involved in a lot of the priorities in terms of their staff time. But priority number two and number three are not, and as I said, please correct me if I'm wrong. And so I think that we need to look at the departments in terms of resources that would be involved in looking in, researching, working on these priorities before we decide that we're only going to spend time on one priority at a time. And then the second thing is, is I do think that there is a little bit of overlap. You gave a very interesting presentation in terms of where we stand as a city in terms of increasing value, in terms of infill, in terms of new development, and so forth. I do think it would be helpful for many of the priorities to get a broader understanding of just where do we stand with housing in this community. I mean, the priority that I was looking at was investing and repurposing the older housing stock. I think that we might be able to take a little bit of opportunity to at least gather some information, do some groundwork, not necessarily figure out what the plan is, but just what is the status right now. And I recognize that that priority, as well as the southeast Urbana priority, does take planning resources, and if they are going to be focusing a lot on priority one, that's going to be difficult perhaps with the resources that we have. So I think that we might want to be a little creative. Certainly, data gathering and just getting a lay of the land is something that could potentially be done by a community group, by a University of Illinois class. If we can leverage other resources that we have in the community to give us this information, I certainly think that we should explore that. So I would just like to propose that, A, we think a little bit about what staffing resources are going to be needed for these different priorities and where staffing resources can be allocated specifically for priority two and priority three, and then think about how we can leverage other community resources.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
Were you here for the, for the October 22nd conversation? I can't remember.
Yeah.
Okay. So I had written, I had written a memo that then became the basis for discussion, and in each case, for each of the priorities, I had written in that memo what we are sort of incrementally doing with existing resources to advance each of the priorities. And we are advancing, you know, incrementally each of the priorities. And then I had proposed that we take some time, if the, if the council was amenable to it, that we take some staff time and develop a series of trade-offs, because what I outlined in the memo was, from a qualitative standpoint, what it's going to take to move the needle, as I say, as I express it, on each of those priorities. And so that, each one, to move, to actually do something substantial, actually takes a commitment of staff time and resources that we then have to make choices about what we're going to stop doing in order, in order to focus on the priorities. The sentiment that came out of that was, let's start with one, and could I recommend what that one should be? And so that's why we're here tonight with me recommending one.
Sure. No, I understand that, and if I remember from that conversation, I think that we were talking a little bit about the document. I actually have it up right now. And you had said, well, these are just my thoughts. This is, you know, kind of what I laid out and so forth. And I do understand the limited resources, and I understand the poor planning department is going to be heavily involved in all of these priorities. I think that we will not be able to make any progress on any other priority if we only do priority one. I absolutely think it's important. I understand that it takes a lot of time, but I think that it is going to take the full three years for us to begin to implement a plan that would move that needle. So that's, that's what I'm going to say to the committee.
Okay, well, thank you.
Dennis?
I somewhat support your point of view. The council in past years were able to make significant advances on many smaller issues. And actually, I think after a period of six to eight years on council, we actually achieved many, many individual goals that we set for ourselves. They were smaller and incremental, but staff actually then defined exactly what steps they would take to, to do them, and then what the conclusions were, and we actually checked off numerous goals, but they weren't as broad as what we're talking about tonight. But I do like the comment that you made concerning generating interest in community energy to fulfill some of our goals, because there are commissions and interest groups who have, for example, interest in the Kikapu Rail Trail. And I think once we have now this grant, and there's going to be, I guess, I'm not sure if our city staff is going to be planning, I don't know what we can do actually in three years on the Kikapu Rail Trail to advance the planning to any significant event, because it's a railway pathway that is being used by the railroad. And we can conceptualize the plan on that, but can we actually achieve very much in that planning document? And it's going to be funded by a federal grant, so if we need to hire a planning consultant to do it, we have funds, apparently, $100,000 plus $25,000 to achieve some of these goals. And so I'd like to hear Carol's point of view about engaging the community to advance some of the goals that aren't being addressed by plan number one or priority number one.
Diane? Did you have?
I just wanted to correct. It's a state grant funding the Kikapu Rail Trail feasibility study plus a local match by Carl Hospital. So at this point, no federal funds.
All right.
RPC is, RPC is the lead agency on that, but city staff will support the effort.
Right. So the staffing issue is pretty much with the RPC as far as activity of?
They're, they're the lead.
The lead.
But Park District and city staff will also support that.
Jared?
So, Mary Ellis, I think what you were getting at was kind of what, where I was going to go next with this, Carol, was if we were to say and agree as council that, okay, go next with this, Carol, was if we were to say and agree as council that, okay, priority number one is priority number one, and let's get something done with that, I think there's the second part of this, which you have on the screen for us, which is, will you also consider reallocating the necessary resources to do so? So what I'm curious is, if we were to do that, what is our next step? What does it look like from here? Because it's one thing to say it, but it's another thing that we have no idea what that means in reality right now. We don't know what we're talking about as far as staff commitment. We haven't seen the, you know, cost-benefit analysis of what we would give up, what we would see going forward.
Right.
And how long it will take. Are we going to, you know, how long will it be till we make another evaluation on the next priority that we're going to do something about, you know? I don't think, Mary Alice, you're wrong at all that these things aren't necessarily all overlapping and couldn't be considered in continuum with one another, that we could work on more than just one at a time. But I think we need to even get to that next step of seeing, okay, well, what is the reality of, what do you think, what do, you know, what does staff think it's going to take to do that? And then we're going to have to talk about that again. Because I don't think, right now, we're going to be in a position to say, oh, well, yeah, let's just do it, because we don't know what that means.
Right. The reason that I'm asking this, that I'm even asking these questions incrementally is because in order for us to put a set of choices in front of you, it takes staff time. So I need to know that you are, I'm not asking you to in advance approve a reallocation, but I need to have a sense, before we make that investment, that you are willing to seriously entertain not doing certain things we do now in favor of at least one priority. I'm not ignoring what Mary Alice said, but perhaps it's because I have nagging in the back of my head, what Elizabeth probably has nagging more to the front of her brain, which is what she said tonight, just as a reference point. Even if we get the extra $951,000 in revenue from the hospitals that we projected, we will still have to cut approximately half a million dollars out of our budget in order to close the gap that she sees right now. That is serious. And so when I think about tackling something like the priority number one and making other resource allocations in doing that, I don't see a lot of other opportunities to do other things in a substantial way. Whether we could, you know, do something incremental using outside resources, I think that's a great suggestion, and we can explore that. But we have to be, I'm trying not to be overly dramatic and yet be very serious when I say we have to focus, because we don't have the luxury of pursuing a lot of diffuse activities right now. And what I tried to do tonight is to make the case for focusing on priority number one and leveraging all these other activities that have happened, these other investments that have happened or are in the process of happening. I mean, we invested in a parking study. We are going to spend money on the facilities assessment and the master plan. That's going to, that is going to tell us, or guide us in the disposition of city-owned properties where we have the highest degree of leverage downtown. So all of these things, the opportunity with the parking agreements at the mall, the potential for something happening with the hotel where we could have, you know, if we're thoughtful about this, we can potentially reopen that corner. And, you know, as the mayor likes to say, demall the hotel.
Liberate the hotel.
Liberal, yes, yes. Liberate, that's much better. So, I mean, there's all of these things that are happening downtown, and we're just not prepared, given where the planning efforts are, to act on any of that. And it's, and what I also tried to express probably not as well as I should have, which is, in the downtown plan, there was an effort made to sort of marry up planning efforts and TIF investments. We need to be much more explicit so that if we expect certain things to happen, we have to be poised with dollars to show up. Not like, oh, yeah, that's something we should start saving for. It's like, no, we've been thoughtful, planful, so that maybe the action we take is actually 10 years from now. But it took us 10 years to get the resources together to act on something that we, with thoughtful consideration, saw coming today.
So I would just like to emphasize here, priority number two, and just to remind people in case you don't have it in front of you, is to increase minority participation in city procurement, hiring and contracting, and work with the Human Relations Commission to develop a system to incentivize and advocate for equity and increase minority employment rates. That, to me, does not include the planning division.
Can I speak to that?
And let me finish. So I feel like we are already, as you had pointed out, working on that. And what I would like to see is what resources, aside from money, aside from investment, what else do we need in order to move the needle on that specific one? What else do we need in order to move the needle on achieving equity in traffic stops? We're already working on this. So what I'm saying is, is that we need to, if we only focus on priority one, we're already focusing on some of this other stuff. I feel like it is a good use of staff time to be able to talk a little bit about, what do we need to move the needle? What are our outcomes for these specific priorities that would not leverage the resources that you're talking about right now? So Diane.
You're absolutely correct. We are already working on two and three. In fact, we have draft language for changing the, altering the language for our procurement policy for the city. And all the development agreements that you are going to see coming forward on each of these new projects will include the language for minority involvement. And especially 200 North Vine, I think, or 200 South Vine is going to be very different from development agreements we've seen in the past. So, yes. It's not 100% mutually, you know, excluding everything, but in terms of effort and resources, you know, focusing on the first priority is important. But it's not going to exclude, we are continuing working on these other issues.
So if, could I address what you said, which you said, if I understood you correctly, you were asking me to focus on staff resources to focus on priorities two and three versus financial resources. So the increasing minority hiring and contracting, we can only go so far with our staff resources. One is, I think there was mention made in the priority, I don't have it in front of me, but creating an incentive program. Well, what we're doing so far with staff resources is we're creating a program, that's really not a program, we're creating a structure in which to express aspirational goals. That's much different than an incentive program, which requires a whole structure, and then there are financial implications to it. We are doing, as the mayor said, we're doing what we can with staff on that, but we're not going to take it as far as it can go without additional resources. What I tried to express in the memo that I wrote about equity in traffic stops, which is, we really, at the moment, don't understand what is causing, we don't understand the causation of the racial disparity. We assume that it has to do with some kind of bias or biased practice on the part of the police. But we don't understand the causation yet. In order for us to understand it, that's going to require resources that we don't have in-house. So that was, that's something that I don't know how much farther we're going to be able to take that priority without a much more, a much fuller understanding of causation.
So what I'm hearing you say is, in terms of all of these priorities, what you're asking from council is, if we are going to be investing financially, then priority number one would take precedent, not necessarily staff time. Because we're already dedicating staff time to the traffic study. We're already dedicating staff time to priority number two, right? So that's what I'm hearing from you, is that if we're going to put dollars down to achieve these priorities, then you're asking council to say those dollars are going to priority one. Is that correct?
I would, not exclusively, but I'll take that as a shorthand. I mean, part of it is also that it's, there are staff activities that in order to invest as fully as we could in pursuing any of the other priorities, that people have to, that they're just going to have to focus differently internally as well.
Eric.
So I'm also looking at the priorities, and I don't see, I don't see actually this Lincoln Square priority as subtracting from, or diminishing, two and three and four. But I think the priority that looks as though there would be directly competitive and maybe will suffer is the priority to invest in and repurpose older housing stock. I mean, that's something that would take a significant amount of staff time, might take some resources. And that looks like a direct competitor, because it's the same kind of folks on staff who would be working on that as would be working on Lincoln Square. Is that a fair analysis?
Anything, any financial resource that we would spend, so setting apart the staff time, will compete with the financial resources here. Because it's not necessarily, whatever we might come up with is not necessarily going to come from the planning department. It could come from some other department entirely.
Yeah. But I don't see, I mean, we're going to be doing a study on Kikapu. The, I think, in my opinion, others may disagree, I really don't see that priorities two and three are things that will be competing for resources with this. It's only the older housing stock that looks to me as though it would actually compete for resources.
Well, and promoting business in southeast Urbana.
And promoting businesses in southeast Urbana. So it looks as though those will, those will be secondary for a while, is the implication of making this really a very focused priority. Is that, I mean, it's, you know, I'm an elected official. I would like to say that we can do everything for everybody, and it won't cost anything.
Well, and that's why I'm here to help you understand how that can't happen.
But I'm also an elected official who will be 80 years old in five days, so I don't care what anybody does to me or says about me. So the, so, yeah, it looks to me as though those are the direct competitors for resources within the next couple of years, I would say. That's how it looks to me, anyway.
So here's what, if I could just kind of maybe say what I'm hearing and what I would propose to come back to you with. Sit down with staff and flesh out the staff resources and other financial resources and the options associated with priority number one. And then, as it relates to priorities number two and three, talk about the staff reallocation of focus, that, not including the financial resources, to move those two priorities. Is that something that you're interested in seriously entertaining?
Aaron, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear about this. The staff time, I think you were heading in the direction that I was thinking about exactly what does it require of staff to have a focus primarily on priority number one? Are you suggesting that the time that particular staff will use would be dedicated only to priority number one? Is that what you're saying?
At the moment, I don't know, I don't know how it would lay out for us in terms of the level of commitment. That's something that I need to talk to staff about. And, you know, some of it would be, some of it is just too much to ask our staff to do, given that they can't just shut the development pipeline off and go, okay, stop knocking on our door for, you know, for site plan approvals and so forth. So they still have to do their day-to-day work. So, you know, we'll have to rely on consultants to a significant degree, I would think.
So I think it's fair for you to say, in your role, that as council, we have things that are important to us or that our constituents have expressed to us that they want to see. And then we come and give voice to that, and we advocate for that, you know, and want to see those particular changes come about. And then we all possibly overburden the staff with various different things, and what's actually getting done on behalf of the citizens that we're supposed to represent. So I can understand us trying to really hone in on what exactly is an efficient operation for us, and what's going to make sure that we get things done on behalf of the citizens, and recognizing that we're not going to always get everything that we want. But I, so I think, in all fairness to you, that it was a great presentation. I understand where you're going with this. But I do think that what was missing from the presentation is the conversation with staff and saying to us, this is what you would need from a standpoint of staff time, this is what you're going to be taking away from, so that we can actually say, okay, we can go along with it, or we can't go along with that.
Understood. I mean, that's the next step. But I want to be sure that if we put in the time to bring you those options, because there will be things that are near and dear to people that we will need to stop doing or delay in order to shift resources to pursue the priority. And I don't want to do that if people are just, if you're too uncomfortable with the idea that you would have to make some serious trade-offs. So that's what I'm asking for, the feedback, before we make-
So for me, the two priorities around minority participation and the equity in traffic stops are something, a couple of things that were very important to me and my constituents, I think to the whole, to Urbana overall, period. And I can see how minority participation, from a contracting standpoint, could be tied directly into the development of downtown, right? Certainly, I can see that. The, and I appreciate you illuminating the difference between council goals or expectations and implementation of a program, right? I do think that that's something that should be teased out a little bit more, and let's really put the resources and things behind a program that's staff time, as opposed to just announcing, these are our goals. And just letting it sit there. I agree that there should be a rollout of something like that, to make sure that we have actual obtainable, as, Jared, what's your favorite word?
Deliverables.
Deliverables. Thank you, Jared. So I get that. And I do, I would have to agree, I guess, for the most part, with, when we talk about minority equity in the stops, there's going to come a point where the rubber meets the road. And if the, if the actual conclusion is that we're having concerns with implicit bias or things of that nature, then how do, what more resources can we put behind that to bring about a change, other than the trainings, diversity, all those types of things? So I can, I can see where those things are not going to, it's not going to overlap very much. I can understand how that's going to be more goals, not a program necessarily. So I was just absorbing a lot of what you were sharing and what the council members were saying. And I just need to see where the things that I think are important to all of us are going to, what, how far on the back burner are they going to be there? And how do they connect? Is there a way for you to show us how these things build on one another? You know, if we build downtown and we get the liberation of the hotel from the mall, how does that affect Philo Road? Right? You know, if there's clarity about that, I think that we get more traction, you know? So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
All right, other comments? I had one comment, and now, now that you said that eloquently, Aaron, it's escaped me for a moment. I will ask you if I remember it. All right, Jared.
So, Bill, we haven't heard much from you about what you think about where we're going with this, or Dean. But I just want to, before you guys give your thoughts, if you want to, lay out that I think that we're- I think that we're in agreement, that we would like to see a next step on Priority One, in what does that look like in reality for reallocations? What are we talking about giving up? What are we talking about as far as time commitment and all that stuff? Does that sound like something everybody wants to see going forward?
Yeah. Bill?
Yeah. I think for me, what will make a difference in how much I'm willing to give up what we already do is being able to see what it's going to be spent on as far as not just another plan, not just another downtown plan that we've done before, but like implementation steps and timelines and things like that, so that even if it is 10 years out or something, you know, then at least you can, you know, take a first step toward that goal. But I think if it's just a matter of giving up all this to do another plan, then I'm going to be pretty reluctant to support it. But I agree that, you know, the downtown is probably one of the things that can make the biggest difference as far as attracting new residents and improving quality of life for people who are here, and that would help Philo Road if we can get other areas that we've had infrastructure already installed where people will move and stuff. So, you know, I'm in favor of making this the first priority. I do think that we've made some progress already on some of the others. But, yeah, I think as far as how it is implemented, and I know the first step's going to be some consultants and planning, but I think there has to be a little bit more than that.
I remembered what I was going to say, so that's okay. All right. So as several of you have already commented, we do have staff already working on some of these items, specifically the Kikapu Trail, right? Just a little bit of staff time, but the majority is another group. So I think that one thing that would help is, as we listen to staff reports, I think it would be good for people who are involved in these items that are focused on these goals, if they could come give us an update. Where do we stand with this? How does this relate to our goal? Does it, are we, I mean, these are other resources, and I think that just having those updates from staff would help us hear where are we heading?
Okay.
So I think that's hopefully an easy way to increase this a little bit. Dennis.
I think it would be very helpful to, especially concerning goal Priority Number One, to get an update on the value of the new Central TIF district. We just incorporated that, we just created that just a couple of years ago. It must not have a very large growth quota for the downtown area yet. Then if the TIF district is becoming, or is expected to become, a source of revenue for incentives to create some of these goals, I'd like to know, how strong is the TIF, and how long will it take for it to be strong enough to become incentivization for downtown development?
I'm not sure that the Central TIF will be the engine that will get this started, but we'll do a presentation about the financials.
Good.
We'll do that.
Any other comments? All right, Carol, do you have what you need in order to move forward?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So with no further business, before this committee, I move for adjournment.
So moved.